Thank you. Good evening, thank you. Good evening, and I'm getting to where my script is, thank you. There we go. In compliance with chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order an information session of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, March 13th, 2025 at 6:01 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at AISD's central office to conduct this meeting. The meeting is being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum, Estound Broadband, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us. Next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the Board. This time allows speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing directly to the school board. We have time for up to 60 speakers. As a reminder, the district continues to provide time during the regular voting meetings of the Board to hear from the public about agenda items for consideration and vote. This is an opportunity for the Board to take part in listening to our community. While we wish we could respond or provide feedback, we are required to limit our questions to requests for clarification or follow-up directly to the administration. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio-record their remarks. Tonight, we have two people who left a recorded message. We will now play the recorded messages for public comment, so please listen carefully.
Trustees, I'm Joe Reynolds. I live at 2611 West 49th, 78731. I'm concerned about the possible excess scale of the redevelopment of the Rosedale site. Besides neighborhood compatibility, a bigger issue is stormwater. The site drains to Shoal Creek just along Block West. The creek there regularly exceeds limits. In the 1981 Memorial Day flood, my professor's son drowned, washed off the Hancock Bridge. His body was recovered just west of Shoal Creek Boulevard from trees on the creek behind Great Oaks, about 2,000 feet downstream of that, folks crammed in their attics. Through your sale contract, ensure that the new development is of proper scale, and it must have adequate onsite floodwater controls. The floodwater is an issue because the school has been a way of retaining water in the lawn and places like that. So as the redevelopment occurs, make onsite mandatory. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Kelly. I have a daughter attending Blazer and a son who will be attending Blazer in two years. I am calling regarding budget cuts involving instructional coaches. I think that the instructional coaches that we have are important to support our teachers, and if we're not able to give them raises themselves, then we certainly should be giving them the support that the instructional coaches provide them. I understand that budget cuts are important, but I think that there are better ways and different places where you can make those cuts other than our instructional coaches. I appreciate the time and your consideration. Thank you.
This concludes our public comment. Thank you to our callers and trustees. Are there any questions or clarifications? All right, thank you. As a reminder to the public, please feel free to share any general comments or questions with the Board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. Next up is our president's report. It is short. Earlier today, the Texas Library Association named one of our Austin ISD librarians as the Texas Librarian of the Year. The new Texas Librarian of the Year is Minda Anderson, who's the campus librarian at the Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders. And it is important to know that this is not an award for just school librarians, but for all librarians. So it is campus librarians, community librarians, university librarians. So it's a real honor and a beautiful recognition of the work our librarians do in our schools and with our students. So congratulations to Minda and Ann Richards, and huge thanks to you and every other librarian in our district for the work you do and the difference you make. Nice thing to be able to celebrate. And next up, as part of the agreed order with the Texas Education Agency, the agreement requires that the Board shall, at the first Board-authorized meeting each month, the Board will publicly report by reading into the record the percentage of time invested in student outcomes during the prior three-month time period and the total time spent in closed session during the prior month. The three-month average for December, January, and February of meeting times spent on loans to our governance defined student outcomes and special education monitoring was 66.49%. So we have exceeded our target of 50%. For the last month of February 2025, we were at 71.02%, and the Board spent 388 minutes in executive session in February. Next up is our Student Achievement Goal. That score called Goal 1, our Literacy Goal Progress Measure 1.1. And it's part of our commitment to discuss student achievement, and we have a presentation on that. As part of our commitment to focus on student outcomes, this time does count toward our TEA-required minutes. And we've estimated 60 minutes for our conversation, although we do not have a time limit on this. And before we hear our presentation, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. Does anyone have evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? All right, so since everyone agrees the required elements are present, we'll turn the floor over to you, Superintendent Segura, for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, President Boswell and trustees. The team and I will present on the Goal Progress Measure 1.1, Second Grade Literacy Intervention. I have joining me here this evening Jennifer Pace, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools, Dr. Mary Ann Maxwell, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Academics, and Liliana Kendrick, Director of Elementary Humanities. The team will be pulling up the monitoring report, and we'll be going through it together. But this is in reference to Goal 1, Third Grade Literacy, and it states, "The percent of third-grade students earning meets grade level or above on the STAR reading assessment in English or Spanish will increase from 47% in June of 2024 to 59% by June of 2029." The Goal Progress Measure 1.1, which was approved by the Board in June, Second Grade Literacy Intervention, "The percent of second-grade students scoring in the recommended-for-intervention level on the NWEA MAP Reading Achievement Score Proficiency Indicator below 30% in English and 40th percentile in Spanish will decrease from 30% in June 2024 to 29% by June of 2029." This is one of those Goal Progress Measures that the lower you go, the better off we are. The work supporting this is tied to our initiative, early learning, which includes enrollment, literacy outreach, partnerships and expansion, but certainly recognizing that learning to read by third grade happens well before that. So focusing in kindergarten readiness, first grade, second grade, and that is certainly a part of the work as we move forward. Austin ISD has long recognized literacy as a key to student success. Our commitment to bilingual education and personalized learning has shaped a comprehensive framework that meets the diverse needs of our students. Goal Progress Measure GPM 1.1 focuses on preventing reading challenges through proactive strategies, data-driven instruction, and ensuring that interventions are implemented early and consistently, helping more students achieve grade-level reading proficiency. The intention of this GPM is to decrease the percent of students that, according to our literacy screener, should be considered for early reading interventionist. Austin ISD beliefs include the development of literacy and bilinguacy, as it is foundational to personal, cultural, and academic identity and successful life outcomes. Lifelong success in literacy is rooted in a whole-child approach to education that fosters academic, social, and emotional development within dynamic and supportive school communities. Literacy includes the development of reading, writing, listening, speaking, and thinking in all languages, and requires a thoughtful approach and knowledge of developmentally-appropriate practices centering on the reading process. Families and our partners with Austin ISD in creating a strong supportive environment for children to thrive academically as we endeavor to provide resources and opportunities for families to support literacy development. As I said before, all of our work is tied to initiatives, and this Goal Progress Measure aligns with our draft district initiative, Foundation First Early Childhood. This initiative positions AISD as a leader in early childhood education by ensuring equitable, high-quality learning experiences for children from birth to grade 2. Foundation First Early Childhood addresses enrollment challenges, expands early child programs, and prioritizes foundational literacy, numeracy, and social-emotional development to close achievement gaps and prepare our students for long-term academic success. The initiative includes several key projects, including enrollment for our youngest learners and high-quality programming for birth to pre-K. But the initiative project most closely associated with this specific Goal Progress Measure is K-2 outcomes, implementing robust foundational literacy and numeracy practices, strengthening multi-tiered systems of support, and enhancing the instructional and enhancing the structural alignment. Milestones include efforts to develop high-quality development appropriate early childhood experiences for students and families, the development of foundational curriculum, and the implementation of new K-2 instructional frameworks as part of the more considerable plan to adopt one coherent and aligned district instructional and assessment framework. To achieve these milestones and embrace learning community mindset, Austin ISD leaders and schools will focus on embracing the idea that rigorous, high-quality learning experiences for all students are necessary for us to close the achievement gaps. So some of the key findings as part of this report include, overall, we are decreasing the percent of students, and again, decreasing is the correct direction, the correct trend, of second-grade students scoring in the recommended-for-intervention level on the NWEA MAP reading when comparing the winter 2023 assessment to the winter 2024 assessment. For those following along at home, in the Board, in our staff, in community, this is one of those data points where we compare period per year versus period of year. So we'll be looking, comparing like, you know, spring to spring, fall to fall, winter to winter. Specifically, we decreased the percent of second-grade students scoring in the recommended-for-intervention level for all student groups from spring 2021 to spring 2024, and for eight out of the 10 student groups from winter 2023 to winter 2024. The following student groups have made the most progress when comparing the winter of '23 to the winter of 2024, reading assessment, including Hispanic, Latinx, two or more students identified as economically disadvantaged, emergent bilingual, and students receiving special education services. The following student groups stayed the same from winter of 2023 to winter of 2024, reading assessment, and that included African-American students. The following student groups increased in the percent of students scoring in the recommendation-for-intervention level from winter 2023 to winter of 2024. It's important to note that this is a very small student group, 12 students in total in 2023 and 10 students in 2024. So you can understand how that might contribute to the variability in the percent increase. It is noted that this small group, as I just mentioned, predicts increased variability year to year. There is not an on-track methodology recommended by the administration or approved by the Board. This will be part of the work as we continue on and refine our monitoring reports. However, the data is showing improvement trends, which is encouraging. This is true for all student groups when analyzing end-of-year spring results, which is the final goal for yearly targets. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Maxwell to take us through the data, and then the rest of the team will take us through the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura. Good evening, President Boswell and Board of Trustees. It's my pleasure to be here tonight with my colleagues presenting our work on early literacy and our improvements so far and the work we still have before us. So tonight, as Superintendent Segura mentioned, we're looking at our MAP data, which is our screener in literacy, and our most recent administration was the winter administration, which was administered actually in December. So it was a couple of months ago that we actually gave this assessment to our students. At the time that we presented this last time, we didn't actually have fall data ready either. And so now we're looking at both fall and winter for this year to kind of see that progression. And as Superintendent Segura mentioned, we're comparing like times of year. And the reason for that is that, as we discussed in the questions that were submitted, there is a different score target for different times of year. So at the beginning of year, for example, for second graders, you're looking for a score target, I think the root score is 164, while winter, to not be below the 30th percentile, bless you.
Thank you.
And then in winter, it increases to 173. So if we were, for example, comparing fall, where the target is 164, to winter, where the target is 173, those comparisons wouldn't be like comparisons for our students. So we do our effort to really just stick with comparing like measures, like seasons for the assessment. Another thing that we're looking at here, just to overall explain again, is the percentile, the achievement percentile of our students. And so what this is, is how our students who are taking this test compare nationally to all other students taking this assessment. And for example, if they were scoring in the 50th achievement percentile, that means they would be right on average with all the other students in the nation taking this test, which is in the millions. If it were above the 50th percentile, they would be scoring above average, below the 15th percentile, below average. What we're using here is an indicator of recommended-for-intervention. So this is really just a screener, it's just a flag. This is not how we identify students for intervention, but this is the initial check engine light, if you will. The check engine light goes on, we don't know if something's wrong, but it could be something, could be something serious that needs interventions, it could be something like a faulty sensor. And that's all it was, was an assessment that day, and then all our other data indicates that the student doesn't need interventions. But this is that first step into that. So what NWA recommends is that if they score below the 30th percentile in reading in English or below the 40th percentile in reading in Spanish, that could be the first indicator that the child might need interventions. And so that's the job of the screener, that's what it does. And as that first initial look, we're just taking this first initial assessment to see whether or not our systems are working. If we're having overtime, ideally, decreasing numbers so that less and less students in Tier 1 in the core classroom would be recommended for interventions, meaning that Tier 1 is working and our systems are working. So we're looking again for decreasing numbers here, and what we've seen are some key takeaways that we've mentioned in our report. So overall, as we look spring to spring, we've had quite a few students and quite a few significant decreases, especially in our most marginalized populations. We've seen decreases in the double digits. From winter to winter, which is our most recent one, as Superintendent Segura mentioned, we have eight out of 10 student groups that have continued to decrease in their numbers who would be, their percentage who would be recommended for intervention. And some of our more historically marginalized populations have seen some of the most progress from winter to winter, last year to this year, including Hispanic, Latinx, economically disadvantaged, emergent bilingual groups that saw four percentage point improvement, two or more races saw six percentage point improvement, and then the special education groups saw seven percentage point improvement, just from winter to winter. So again, comparing like seasons. The winter assessments or the winter mark can vary a little bit because every student's progress within part of a year can look a lot different and with different cohorts. So sometimes we see more of a variation from winter to winter, or less progress from winter to winter that we would see, for example, fall to fall, that have had a whole year, or spring to spring, which is more, again, like a whole-year assessment of what has happened with the, in the educational year of a student. Also, in winter to winter, we see that there is a student group that remained the same. We didn't see progress from last winter to this winter. That was the African-American student group. They stayed from 59% to 59% being recommended for interventions. Overall, that group has shown progress. That has a 12 percentage point decrease in the number of students, indicating some longitudinal progress, but we're not seeing that from winter last year to winter this year. And then, as mentioned, the American Indian student group did show a decline from winter to winter, but we see a lot of fluctuation, larger fluctuations from that. So despite the winter-to-winter results, they've made some more significant longitudinal progress, but we'll see that move up and down quite a bit. Even one student having a different result, or two students having a different result can have a 10 to 20% impact when, of course, there are only 10 students in the group. And then, as mentioned, overall, our longitudinal data is showing really nice progress across all student groups. So that when I say longitudinal, I'm just talking about the spring results for the last several years. As you can see here, American Indian overtime is a decreased percent of 26 percentage points, African-American 12 percentage points, Hispanic a decreased 23 percentage points, economically disadvantaged decreased 18 percentage points, emergent bilingual a decrease of 17 percentage points, and special education a decrease in 21 percentage points. We saw other decreases in other populations, but these were the largest ones. In our most marginalized groups, there were double-digit decreases in the numbers and the percentage of students that were recommended for interventions. Still, we have work to do, which is our last key takeaway here. The gap does still persist between the performance of ethnicities, our white students compared to our African-American students and our Hispanic-Latinx students. So while that was a 46 percentage point gap in spring of 2021, we've reduced that gap for Hispanic students. It was a reduction down to 30. For African-American students, a reduction down to 41. So a 5% difference for African-American students and a 16% percentage difference for Hispanic. So the gap still persists, and also, we can see that we need to accelerate that learning to continue to decrease that gap. Those are our largest gaps in our populations compared to our white students, and that the African-American gap is decreasing, but it's decreasing at a slower rate. And so there's definitely need for, and we talk about this a little bit later, for root cause analysis on that specific slower rate of decrease. We want to accelerate that rate of decrease. So for our root causes, we, a lot of these largely remain the same as the root causes that we've been presenting on for the last few years, for the last few presentations, sorry. And so pandemic loss, how we're recovering that learning and recovering consistency in our system and strength in our system, consistency with our materials and our previous changes in materials and curriculum usage and changes in professional learning, all the changes that the system has gone through over the last several years have really impacted those student outcomes. We continue to struggle with a national staffing shortage in teachers, and certainly certified teachers. And then we also have added to this one some root causes for some of the positive outcomes that we've started to see in the last, especially the last, you know, from the last, end of spring of last year to continued pretty consistent decreases this year, which have to do with, we believe, our alignment of our curriculum, building that consistency back into what's happening in the classroom, building that consistency across our teams as we're going out into campuses and we're coaching and we're working with teachers and instructional leaders. Again, building consistency in the materials and the professional learning that we provide to them and the quality of that, and then just really a strong focus on observation, feedback of what's actually happening in the classroom with our teachers, with our students, and as much, as frequent as we can and as much real-time feedback as we can give on that. We believe those have been contributing more and more to the decreases in students that could qualify for interventions. And I'll hand it over to my colleague Jennifer Pace for outliers.
Great. Good evening, President Boswell, trustees, Superintendent Segura. It's an honor to be here and participate in the presentation tonight, my first, so I'm excited. We'll say that we did see some familiar challenges in the data in that our Band 1 and 2 campuses had a higher rate of students scoring in the recommended-for-intervention level, but we do have some positive outliers in Bands 1 and 2, specifically Andrews, Barrington, Hart, Overton, Padron, Perez, and Pickle, along with Guerrero, Thompson, and Palm. They have significantly smaller percentages of students scoring at the recommended-for-intervention range. So we've been engaging with those campus leaders and teachers to understand and replicate their success, and we did notice a pattern of practices from all of the outlier campuses that I wanted to share, and this is included in the report. One was sticking to the curriculum, so the teachers have been committed to explicit foundational skills instruction and comprehension instruction, and really following the curriculum guides that are developed by the humanities team with fidelity. They're also consistently using high-quality resources for instruction and intervention, and they actually praised our intervention resources for being easy to use and effective in addressing the learning gaps. So that was great to hear. Instructional coaches, we've heard that come up in other reports, but instructional coaches also here increase support for teachers and assist teachers in PLCs, their modeling lessons, observing and coaching teachers. And also campus leaders, instructional coaches, and teacher leaders are engaging in regular ongoing training provided by our humanities team, and that has been a big lift. In addition, leadership teams are conducting observations together and discussing those observations and having clear expectations that are informing the professional development that's happening on campuses and inside of PLCs. They all cited implementing the MTSS process and using data to inform instruction and intervention, setting intervention goals, and tracking student progress. So really, these practices are a blueprint for success. They demonstrate that when instructional alignment, collaboration, strong leadership, and data-driven practices come together, real change can happen. And now I'll let Dr. Maxwell share on progress of our initiatives, or, okay, sorry.
Ms. Kendrick. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Boswell and Trustee Superintendent Segura, for the honor to be here, and very pleased to tell you that our progress initiatives have been since we have implemented. Our 4GPM 1.1, which is our K-2 academic outcomes, we want to really implement our foundational skills for literacy. We know that literacy, it is the foundation and is the key for everything that we do with our children. One of the big things that we have done has been the FIVE initiatives, which starts with our MTSS, which is our multi-tiered system support. As we continue to support the first foundation and early childhood, it is so important that we know that implementation of making sure that we have high-quality instructional materials is key. It starts in Tier 1, and if we do not address Tier 1, then even if we address the Tier 2 and 3, but there are no align, we're not going to have the impact. So making sure that our Tier 1 is strong. We realign the curriculum to make sure that it's building a structured literacy foundational skills, and also our language comprehension piece is also built with knowledge building so that we can create a support with our students. We also make sure that we provide and implemented walkthrough practices. This is huge because as teachers are continuing to learn the curriculum, we need to make sure our strong leaders on campuses are able to provide the feedback that they need. A curriculum, it's not well-implemented. A curriculum, even if it's aligned but it's not well-implemented and it is used as intended, it's not going to have the impact that it needs to. So for us to be able to do that, we have to provide that walkthrough and that feedback, and it's like the immediate feedback. It's not like, I teach the lesson and I'm on away six weeks, and oh, you've been teaching it wrong. Like, we want to make sure that we are addressing it right at the moment. Continuous walkthroughs and calibrations has been a huge part of our practice with our campus leaders. We know it starts with them because they are the people on the ground, working with our teachers, and making sure that if we train them, they are the ones who are going to do that. And so we're building capacity with our campus leaders, our assistant principals, our instructional coaches, and then our, we do with our PLC leads, so we train our teacher leaders as well through PLC leads so that they can continue and support that. Another thing that we are continuing to do is the professional learning, but this year we have done something very unique that has been done for us, which is also that we support our trainings, but also our reading academies, our especially coaches that they go on campus. Hospital 3 has required this certification, but this is the first year that it's been required to be comprehensive model. So what does that mean? It's a face-to-face training in person. It means that we offer 10 sessions in person with our teachers. We deliver the content, but then we also show them and apply with our curriculum in Tier 1 and Tier 2. And then they go out and they offer four cycle coaching cycles in person, and they provide feedback to them. And so I think that it's huge from our blended model, which was online, versus now in person and coaching live feedback. And our ACSs, we have been providing that support, so that really has been a huge impact in our current practices. We're currently serving about over 200 teachers, and then we have a team, our team or specialists working, and we are constantly doing coaching cycles. So it is a significant number of teachers, and we continue to do. So now I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Maxwell for the key performance indicators.
So some of the ways that we're tracking this work and just making sure that, you know, we're looking at multiple points of data, it's quantitatively and qualitatively. We reference here in our key performance indicators, our KPIs. So we're definitely looking at So we're definitely looking, of course, at third grade STAR and even some things before that, using our MAP assessments to look at STAR projected proficiency, which we have found has been a very strong predictor of how students actually do on STAR when they take that winter map, and we can get that number from them. And so, of course, they're not yet available for this year, but looking historically already and making sure that we're, we're projected to make more progress this year. Of course, what we have here for our GPM, the percentage of second graders and how they're scoring in the intervention range, if you will, on the MAP growth test. And then also, as part of our larger system, working with campuses, working with people, instructional coaches, leaders, in executive directors going out on a very consistent basis after we, we give our assessments to look at how our kindergarten and our first grade students are doing, because as we know, it's, it doesn't just happen in third grade, right? We're backing up here to second grade for this GPM, but what we're seeing overall in our kindergartners and our first graders is really critical to that vertical growth as well. And again, we take, you know, a few assessments for that, but also have conversations about what we're seeing in classrooms. And many, many of our observations this year, as we go out into campuses, are focused on the lower grades. So we see, we've seen a lot of really rich kindergarten and first grade classrooms as well. We're not just focusing on second grade or the STAR tested grade levels as we, as we work with our early learning initiative and track that progress. Of course, we're looking at the percent of students who are receiving those tier two and tier three interventions and really whether or not longitudinally they're moving across those tiers. Ideally, you want a student staying in tier one as much as possible. If they move into a tier two intervention, which is a removal from some of the core one instruction that they would be getting, not, not the core instruction, but during differentiation time and, and small group time and intervention time, they, they would be getting an intervention. Ideally, you have them in a tier two intervention, and it works really well for the time that you're with the student, and the student goes back into a tier one. As I would say, it's critical they go back into a successful, strong tier one environment at that point, so they continue to, to progress forward and so on and so forth. You want them in interventions. Ideally, you're always working to get a student back into tier one. And so over time, we'll track that progress of our students that are in tier two and tier three interventions and hopefully moving them back, reducing that number as well and moving them back into tier one. And of course, year-over-year data results, like we've shown tonight, observational data, which I, which I mentioned, and then our participation, our professional development focused on literacy, focused on early learning developmentally appropriate practices. Those are all part of our KPIs that we're looking at to, to make sure that we're still progressing with this initiative. And then the plan forward. So we're definitely planning on continuing, building this growth by continuing our very systematic, ongoing professional learning. We meet very, very regularly with these groups and principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches, teacher leaders. And so going into next year, we definitely want to continue that regular professional learning with them and then providing that explicit support to them and turning around any professional learning on their campuses as well. Of course, our executive directors provide regular principal coaching and instructional leadership team coaching, really, on the whole team. That we consider definitely a robust part of our professional learning system as we believe coaching is the most effective form of professional development. And then coaching cycles on, on literacy, continuing to see that, that feedback that we're seeing in the classroom and, and coaching focused on literacy, and then differentiating these for campuses based on the outcomes that we're seeing. We already do definitely provide a focused and more frequent level of support to our band one and band two campuses, and we continue to look at outcomes to make sure that that's aligned and that's working for our systems. And then, of course, continuing to support and strengthen our MTSS system, our, our campuses, our system, our district has done so much work on this this year. And moving into next year, we want to continue to strengthen everything that we have and then begin to differentiate for where campuses are and have very, more of an individualized support. We'll definitely keep building the knowledge as we go, but more individualized support for our campuses as well as they're implementing these systems. We've already started to do that as an MTSS team, look through the system, monitor and see where we've got some strengths, where we've got some areas for improvement, and then going out and coaching specifically our MTSS team along with our executive director and humanity team, humanities team, to, to really kind of pinpoint where we can support certain campuses, what we're seeing in our monitoring. And then just, you know, continuing with the tools that we're already using, our, our screeners that we already have, guidance for instructional schedules, that it seems like a minor thing, but it's a really critical piece of making sure that tier one is happening, there's time for tier two and tier three. It, it, in the elementary world, and it's not easy at the secondary world either, but when you're in the elementary world, an, an early intervention is key. Having it have dedicated time in the schedule is very, very critical. So, and, and then you've got to do it for math, and you have to do it for reading, and these are teachers that also teach tier one usually, and sometimes they're doing tier two and sometimes even tier three interventions. And so we've got to have dedicated time in the schedule. The pullouts have to happen at that same time. So when that system is working, it, it's, it's wonderful, and we have some plans to share some really great systems that we've seen lately. And Leadership Institute and, and continue to build on what's happening, but also it's, it's coaching, it's guidance, it's sometimes sitting down with campuses and going through the entire list of students and saying, okay, is this, is this student in the right place? Do we have them in the right time? Do we have the dedicated time we need according to what we're, we're saying that they need? And then can just continuing to provide the data, coaching, the support, feedback cycles on campuses and coaching, and making sure that we're providing that sort of support according to our support and resource index. And I think Jennifer Pace, you've got the last piece of plan forward.
Yes, and to strengthen, continue to improve and strengthen systems and engagement, we definitely want to continue focusing on literacy walkthroughs and coaching our principals to know what to look for, not just, I see the materials were good, but really, are we digging into the curriculum and making sure that they're being used with fidelity and that we're on pace? Using our data to identify and include priority campus leaders and teachers to come and observe exemplars and utilizing our executive directors to help them refine strategies on their campuses. And continuing to look at our PLC format, just to help teachers continue to dig into our instructional materials and understand them and get better at using them, as well as looking at MTSS data, making sure that we are moving students out of tiers and they're not just stips, kind of stagnating in an intervention group. And also using some of that time to continue to provide targeted and differentiated professional development. We want to continue to involve parents in the literacy work and their students' progress, especially for our historically underserved groups. And we want to allocate content interventionists to support our band one campuses especially and continue engaging with and learning from our outlier campuses that are having success and trying to replicate that. And then, as Dr. Maxwell mentioned earlier, we really want to focus on closing achievement gaps between student groups, really by learning more about what's causing it. We really can, we have to do root cause analysis and understand it to understand how to fix it. So really trying to seek to better understand why some of our student groups are not making equal progress and some of our campuses are not making equal progress, and adjusting our supports, adjusting our coaching and our training, principal training, teacher training, supports with our curriculum resources for teachers at high-needs campuses based on the findings. And then, just like I said, continuing to work on strategies to boost the family engagement and increasing opportunities to help our caregivers support their children at home. And I think that gets us through the report, and we want to open it up for questions.
Yeah, and, and I think before we hand it back to the board, one of the things that I think is worth sharing with the board is kind of a takeaway and maybe almost like an aha moment for me after, you know, I was working with the team here. There's a comment that was made earlier this week around feeling like this is year one. And, and there's a reason that it kind of feels that way, and I go back to the spring of two thousand and twenty-three when we were sitting here and trustee Hunter was sitting over there where trustee Deodiosi is, and we talked about the need to do something before the end of the year because we knew that our, our, our communities, school communities really needed resources to launch twenty-three, twenty-four. And we made an investment, we kind of went through a process, we identified, procured consumables, we distributed the consumables, we then, you know, went through a process, rolled out professional development, and at the same time, we're building out the MTSS system, you know, by way of TA agreed order as well as kind of other best practices. And so now you have the ability to, to kind of understand where our students are, but then you realize that the resources needed to, to support our educators to have success and first teach in tier one requires, you know, instructional coaches, which is the investment we made in twenty-three, twenty-four by way of Title One. And then fast-forwarding a little bit, recognizing that, you know, some of our schools, after you go through this assessment, you realize that there are many students that need interventions, and the percent is, is too great to handle without additional support, which is why we made the investment in the November of two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, sorry, three, uh, four, for content interventionists, right, to support two, uh, tier two and tier three interventions. And so it's really like this kind of building up of a, of a system, and I think we're beginning to see it respond, but it doesn't happen overnight. Along the way, there were, you know, teacher vacancies that, you know, Brandy and team had to address, there were resource challenges that we had. So it, it's really, I think, just a kind of building on of, of work that, that really didn't happen overnight. And, and a lot of the things that we have been able to do really required and, and needed the support of the board. So I just think it's worth noting that this doesn't happen in two or three months. It, it really had to build off other things that we've done over the last, you know, two and a half years. So with that, I'll hand it to the trustees for any questions.
Great, thank you all. Thank you, Superintendent Segura, for that. So we'll now open the floor for our monitoring conversation. And as a reminder, we've asked questions that are of technical or tactical nature before tonight's meetings, and you can find those questions and their answers posted with the agenda materials and board docs for the public to see. And our questions during the meeting will be of strategic nature, meaning we'll ask questions to help us understand how the reality for our students is aligning with our vision. Anyone have questions about this? Trustee Coffin.
Thank you for the presentation. One question I have is, you know, already been answered, which is, you know, who is moving, who is getting it the most in terms of the progress? And you highlighted some of the campuses that are getting the, the outliers. So I'm going to ask a follow-up question to that question, which is, when you look at our emergent bilingual students who are learning in both English and in Spanish, where do you see our students progressing most in Spanish? And where do you see them progressing most in English? And more importantly, where do you see them progressing the most, like simultaneously in both languages?
That's a great question. This, this data, the way that we pull it for this report is the best of. And so it doesn't disaggregate in between the languages that the student is testing in. But I would love to go back and look at our outlier campuses, about really all campuses, and see that specifically and, and note that as, as some possible examples. As we're thinking, we were just talking about multilingual education training going into next year and, and some of the requirements and some optional sessions and things like that, that we'll have both of. And I think that would be really good information going into it and even having some of those schools share what they're doing.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, I'd love to see the follow-up on that data on the language. And then, again, this was already answered, which is what is happening that's making, you know, why is the progress happening where we're seeing it happen? And so there are several themes that you shared about the responses that are getting, you know, where, at the campuses that are getting the best results. So I guess my question there is a follow-up to that as well, which is, what quantifiable data do you have to support that it's those strategies and practices that are getting the results? For example, are you, do you have, rather than kind of anecdotal of the principals telling us this, do you have data to show that at this campus, PLCs are happening this way? At this campus, we have data that the HQIMs are being implemented. At this campus, we, you understand the?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Got that. So most of our campuses are all implementing PLCs very consistently, and it's actually built into the master schedule. Many of our campuses, our executive directors have sat in and participated in PLCs with, just to observe and provide feedback. And most campuses keep a record, maintain a record of it. So while we haven't pulled meeting record data, most of this is anecdotal. Our campuses do have systems to just track and document their PLC meetings.
So, so on that point, then, if, when you say most campuses are consistently using the, the PLCs, that's all campuses, not just outliers?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess that's where my question comes from again, is that if that's one of our foundational strategies is to implement PLCs, and we're seeing it done kind of universally, and yet we're seeing results that are scattered, then
Yes.
I would like to see that as, you know, check, we've implemented this at ninety-five percent, and now that's found, that's built in, and now our next strategy that we're working to focus on is seeing consistent implementation of why. And then here's where we're at on that data. And with the belief, right, that if this theory of change works, when those foundational pieces are all built, then we'll get the jump to the results.
Absolutely.
So I, I guess I would just want to go back to that again to
Yeah.
Following up on my question from my chart is, why is it working in this area? And then what's the evidence to show that that's happening?
Good. And what, and just I want to add one thing to that, that what we heard from principals too about some of the teams, especially with regard to this second grade MAP test, is just that they had a really strong person on the team, or they had a team that had been working together and collaborated well together. So I think that, you know, the makeup of the team impacts that as well, but we'll gather more information on that.
Also want to point out that a lot of the quotes and, that we have notes on and the information that we gathered was actually from teachers and not from principals. So it was the teachers that were saying about, you know, this is what we found to be successful. And while I, I think we get, should get into the nuances of that data that you're talking about, for example, PLCs, because while we have lots of campuses that are, are, have the regular time and we've done a great job of putting it on the schedule, we've done some very nice rollouts of, of what, what PLCs are in the past couple of years. Some campuses, these campuses in particular, are implementing it with a level of understanding and fidelity that really lends itself to the, the cohesion of the team and the collaborative learning of the team that really, that really we, we can see in the student outcomes. But I do think we should get into the nuances of, okay, what are we seeing in this PLC versus that PLC, so we can share that as well.
Instructional coach came up too, as a response from both teachers and principals, just that it's helpful to have them as a voice in those PLCs.
And then I would like to add that when it comes to our bilingual, emergent bilinguals and dual language, we have done an amazing collaboration with the Met department. And so this year, we have worked in very hand-in-hand to make sure that we're addressing all our students, not just. And so that also brings a layer, like it's not to separate curriculums, it's actually one coherent curriculum that is coming together to bring those strategies. And we're also helping our ESL classes also use some of the shelter instructions that we use for dual language to say it helps all children. So I think using a lot of turn and talk strategies to conversation, develop oral language across has been a foundation, not just for our emergent bilinguals. And I think that has been a huge impact, you know, because we also align the curriculum, but we have provided guidance and we're constantly coaching. So I think that has been a huge success on the outliers.
Okay, thank you. And so, so again, working off of the question of what is working and, so to be blunt, I mean, for two and a half years, at every reading update, we hear about PLCs being a fundamental part of that strategy. So for my sake personally, I don't really need any further explanations of PLCs. I think I really just need to know, we are at ninety-five percent implementation of PLCs, and we've had, have assessed the quality of our PLC implementation at, you know, high quality is happening at forty-five percent. And then next meeting, we can hear an update to that. I think that would be a kind of a valuable use of our time to just kind of know, these are the foundational strategies, and there, we see them being implemented. So just as a further idea. But all that said, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I appreciate all the effort that's happening, and thank you for the answers.
Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. Good evening. I will begin with just saying that the question that I'm going to ask, I, it is, it aligns with lone star governance, student outcomes, continuous improvement, and equity-driven accountability. Given that African American students showed no winter-to-winter improvement in literacy intervention rates and students receive, both students receiving special education services were moving in the wrong direction, I looked at the root cause analysis and the district's strategies. The district has outlined Um, the district is outlining system-wide strategies. However, for students who had no movement or regressed, what are the additional or differentiated interventions that are going to be implemented specifically for these groups? And, um, when will we, will they come along the same monitoring? Because we've been doing the same thing and it's not working, so I'm assuming that we're now going to do something different or more.
So trustee Hunter, you said, I just want to make sure I, I understand the second part, because there's a, a, a statement saying special education, students receiving special education services moved in the wrong direction?
Or regressed. Did I read that wrong?
They, they moved in the pot, in a good direction.
Yeah, they decreased. From winter to winter, they decreased by seven percentage points.
Yeah, that wasn't the right group, and I'm sorry.
The only group, uh, so
It was the ten to twelve.
That was with ten students and twelve students.
Yes.
That, that was, that was the one where
American Indian.
It was Ameri-, yeah.
American Indian, okay, yeah.
So do you want to, so, I, I think it's important
Thank you.
It is the African-American student group from winter to winter that I think is the, and then longitudinally, there is demonstrated improvement and a decrease, but do you want to speak to kind of some of the focus on African-American student, um, kind of, kind of adjustments intervention to support that student group as we kind of
Different and apart from the ones that we have that are universal.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons why we, um, put in the report that we really need to address, um, an, an additional root cause. So, and, and having this conversation, we thought, okay, um, improvement is there, right? Longitudinally, it's not at the rate that we want it to be, and in particular, from winter to winter, there wasn't a decrease that we saw in some of the other populations. Um, it didn't increase, but it stayed the same, right? So there was a little stagnancy there from winter to winter. It was the first time we'd seen that stagnancy, but still it was there. Um, and so what we talked about was, i- instead of, we actually, um, requested that we, uh, have all of the African-American population data, um, broken down by campus specifically so we could see some, a little more what, what was happening on different campinas, campuses. It was very difficult to draw a trend at the district level, and so that's when we said, okay, we really need to do a campus-level root cause analysis on what's happening. And by that mean, we, we mean going into, they're receiving the same strategies, there's definitely having some improvement, but it's not at the rate that we want. And so campus to campus, classroom to classroom, what are we seeing? What are we seeing that needs to be, uh, improved upon? What are we seeing that we're seeing excellent results in students? And, um, like, what's happening relationship-wise with those students in the classrooms? What's happening in, in family engagement and outreach in those campuses, if there are different programs going on? But it really needs to be a campus-to-campus level root cause analysis, rather than a larger district one that we actually do for these, for often for these, uh, for the district-wide reporting. So the answer to that is, we need to find the answer to that, and not just by doing another screener or doing another data dig, but really by being out on campuses. And we've talked even, um, in, in our groups and also a little bit at Chief's last time about what tools specifically we could use, and even some recommendations from our equity audit that we could use to really find those answers in, uh, the most objective way possible to be able to make determinations to change what's happening.
The other thing, well, I was gonna say, one, one thing that this doesn't represent is really the, um, the true deployment of content interventionists, right? So the tax rate election approved the ability for us to bring them into the system, um, but as, at scale, uh, that, that is not kind of, you know, it hasn't been absorbent to the school system, right? I mean, it just, it just hasn't. And so, uh, as we move forward for, for the next fiscal year, uh, or next school year, you know, having, um, them in, in place will go a long way, because that's where the support will come for tier-two and tier-three interventions. Uh, and I think once you look at the correlation between two, tier-two and tier-three correlations, uh, sorry, numbers of interventions against the band-one and band-two, which you're gonna see, I would expect, based on how, you know, the support is distributed, is, is kind of the additional support at the schools that are, that have the higher percent of students that are Black or African-American. That's just how the, it's built out. So that is one thing that's not represented in this effort, but will be coming, and I think that's one thing that we can look to, to see, um, to show a meaningful improvement in that area as like a catalyst to move the, the students in the right direction.
Okay, I wanted clarification. You said that, um, a root cause analysis on campus-to-campus has not been done.
I would say, I wouldn't say in the most systematic of ways, no. I mean, uh, definitely, we've gone out and done observations, and I think that's been happening, um, for, um, quite some time, but to really gather, so usually when we do that, we gather multiple teams and we go out and look at multiple areas. You would use, you know, specific tools and everyone's using similar tools and looking for similar things in order to be able to, uh, make a, a good determination of what's happening at different places across the district. And I, unless that has happened prior to my coming here.
I, I don't believe so.
No.
Don't believe so.
No.
So then I guess the, then my final kind of, um, thoughts and comments is, one, like, when is that going to be done is my, my first question? And second of all, um, these are goals that we have to meet. They show up in communities that are underserved, and it shows up in African-American students, constraints, and GPMs. So I would imagine that this is a priority, and so if it hasn't been done, my expectation is that it will be done soon, because it's going to ding us in two places if we are not, I mean, can't fix something if we don't know where it's broken. And right now, we don't seem to know where it's broken. So, um, I would love to have an update. In fact, you and I will be meeting in a week to know a little bit more about what the plan is moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add that something that has been different this year, um, because we haven't had a long runway just yet, but I do believe we're gonna see benefits, is the MTSS implementation. Prior to this year, we had not provided, um, intervention resources and provided training on how to use those intervention resources and provided training on how to come together and look at progress monitoring data and make decisions. And so we purchased materials, provided materials in the fall, trained teachers, um, in October, and have been successfully implementing interventions. We still have work to do on, on learning to look at the data and kind of know when to make moves and how to make moves, but it is something different that's happened this year, so I just wanted to point that out.
And then I also wanted to add that as we continue to grow, that's one of the biggest concerns, is our emerging bilinguals and our African-American students. And so we know that we have to add extra layers and support to make them success. And I know that it's not okay for us to continue to see that data is not moving, so we are gonna, also our team gonna look at, how can we differentiate on our tier-one to provide more scaffolding tools to make sure that every child gets there? So the teachers actually have the tools to differentiate for our underserved population.
Thank you. Trustees, more questions? Do we all either have to ask a question or say that our questions have been answered?
I have a question. Thank you. So I guess I wanted clarification first about the content interventionist. Does that position exist at band-three and band-four campuses? Yeah, does it?
So, uh, I have to think of Brandy. So we, we modified our, our distribution. We had, so the rollout of this also had to be, I would say, in alignment with, um, you know, the T agreed order and input from our monitors. So I, we, we do have, um, we've identified the number that we, that have been, uh, that we can support by way of the T agreed order, I mean, sorry, the, um, uh, the tax rate election. And so we developed a plan to begin to distribute those. Uh, we've since adjusted that, because what we didn't want to have happen, and actually getting feedback from principals, was that we were gonna have educators kind of move laterally from the classroom to, to become a content interventionist, and that was something we wanted to be really sensitive to, especially as we close out the spring semester. And so we do not have, um, at this time, from a distribution perspective, allocations at every one of our campuses. The goal is to create a network to support all of our campuses, but it's really meant to be, um, kind of correlated to the number of, um, interventions required by campus. And so when you look at band-one and band-two schools, you know, when you look, you know, it's not an, uh, an eighty-five, you know, twenty, you know, five, it is, it's almost flip-flopped, where tier-two and tier-three are much higher percent, which means the content intervention support needs to be provided to a greater degree. So for that reason, it is not across all band-three and band-four. Uh, there, there's some kind of district support, kind of in the, kind of strategy of distribution. If that makes any sense.
No, yeah, it does. No, thank you for the clarification. Um, I guess what, the reason that I'm asking about that is, my concern is around the student groups that, um, trustee Hunter was just talking about. When I look at the data on pages thirteen and fourteen that detail the performance of students in need of intervention on particularly band-three and band-four campuses, I see campuses where there are very high percentages of African-American students that would be in need of intervention. And so I was wondering what, if because of their position within our band system, they don't qualify for an instructional coach or for a content interventionist, then what alternative supports are provided to those campuses to supplement a lack of an IC or a content interventionist?
Good evening, everyone. I wasn't sure whether to come up or not, so I, I appreciate being, uh, able to talk to you tonight.
You can always come up here.
Thank you. Thank you. I heard my name. So, um, trustee Gonzalez, thank you for the question. Uh, and, and for, just for clarification, I absolutely understand the question specific to band-three and four, that, that newly allocated CI positions, content interventionist positions, were across bands-one and two, um, highly focused in band-one especially. However, those are not the only content interventionist positions that exist in the district, uh, because other campuses procure them through trades, purchases, et cetera. So there's actually ninety-seven positions, content interventionist positions in the district. We, uh, it was only the new allocations that were strictly focused there. However, um, being that our budget continues to, uh, become more challenging, uh, and our, um, funding sources become more limited, we have to create increased flexibilities for our campuses to be able to meet that need in unique ways. So we have been working, uh, in fact, I spoke to, I say I spoke, I emailed our school leadership team last night to, to remind them to like, to work with their principals, to get innovative with how they can, uh, provide these, um, uh, positions on their campus, because every campus is nuanced and they need different things, and we need to listen to our principals to be able to provide that for them, uh, and create that level of flexibility. And we're getting there. We have some pretty unique ideas going on right now. So, um, you will see expansion of CI's into, into bands-three and four by way of creativity of the principal of that campus.
And I think the one thing I, I want to point out is that, um, content interventionists are paid for out of general operating budget, so one-nine-nine, and the vast majority of them are. Uh, and then instructional coaches are ti- paid out of title. And so, um, you know, the, both are going, I mean, we're limited in both, but title was out of our control and it continues to go down. And so that's why for us, you know, Brandy and her team are really sitting down with our principals and, and just getting creative and figuring out, like, what can we do to support this campus based on the resources that are allocated? And, um, you know, if there are things that are above and beyond, then it comes to me. But as a system, we can't offer what we used to offer unless we kind of go back to the other conversation regarding budget. But generally speaking, that's our philosophy and our approach to making sure that we have that conversation with a principal, um, to, to do the best we can at each campus.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer. I, um, have spent the last couple of weeks visiting, um, uh, neighboring charter schools that have four-letter names, and it's been interesting to see, um, I guess, the, I'll say the quality of instruction that's happening or not. And so to speak to the importance of walkthroughs and observational coaching that can be provided by instructional coaches is, is very important. Um, and it's a competitive edge that I think our schools have over, you know, what I saw, which was just sitting students on Lexia for like hours at a time, um, at the elementary level. So, thank you for that. Uh, on page three, you talked about family engagement as a critical factor for, um, early literacy success? So could you talk a little bit about how the district is working to ensure that families, particularly of those in historically underserved, um, communities, are equipped to help their students with literacy development at home?
So we've really, this year, been trying to help, uh, families to understand what instruction is happening in the classroom with regards to literacy. So we have been sharing, um, a literacy newsletter that's aligned to our curriculum that comes out every
Every, every three weeks, our new modules are presented. So every three weeks, the newsletter goes out and it has all the information that they can support the child at home. And we continue to improve. And what we like about it is the principals are reaching out and they're saying, our parents are wanting more passages, so decodable passages. We want more of these because they're seeing kids are reading. And so they wanted to learn more, and so we're continually to add and increase, and we continue to collaborate and respond to our families as well. And so that's one of the things that is, the letter goes out, we provide it in multiple languages on the programs that we offer. It's not just in, in English, it's in Spanish, Vietnamese, and Mandarin, and it goes out to our families.
It does include activities that families can engage in at home, um, and, but what we're trying to figure out is how families are receiving them, but we don't necessarily have a way to quantify if they're using them or engaging with them. Um, so we're trying to make sure that our teachers share, uh, progress, especially when we take our MAP assessments at the three points during the year, um, and help families understand, uh, how students are making progress on that test, what their targets are, if they're falling into a range that needs intervention, and then also looping them into, um, child study team meetings when we are, um, talking about if their student qualifies for intervention and if their student is coming out of intervention, just making sure that they have a seat at the table.
Um, and expanding on that, next year, we've already started to look at a few materials and, and resources that, um, could be, we could do in addition to that, um, particularly for, uh, band-one and band-two campuses, um, but we could expand it to more, um, that are, uh, reading activities that actually go home with students and resources that go home with students, um, that, um, are on their, um, at their kind of like, that match where they are in, in their reading and, and challenge them a little bit as well. But the idea there is, families really do enjoy engaging, but just having the right resources and the ideas and the things to do that, I think is, is, can be, can be a challenge. Reading seems, could, can be, other than reading with your child at night, right, which is very important, um, actually doing things that support what they're learning in the classroom and being where they are in their learning are a little bit trickier. And so we're looking at some more materials that we might be able to do next year that could support that.
Thank you. That was the one, um, question that I had as you were explaining all that, is how, what in data do you have that these things are actually being accessed and used? Because I would hate for the effort on our end to be, you know, not useful, like, you're just throwing things at a wall and it's not really seen. Um, but I also do hear what you're saying is, times are very tough, time is limited, so what is the best way for families to engage and support their students' early literacy? Um, thank you. One last question was, we've been going out and doing, uh, engagement around this scorecard the past few weeks, and, uh, last week, trustee Foster and I were at, um, Botheron Elementary, and particularly on this goal, uh, one of the questions that, uh, a parent asked us was, uh, why our goal for improvement was so modest? Um, it's, it's a one point from thirty to twenty-nine, and so I was wondering if you could speak to that a little bit? Thank you.
So it goes back to the many discussions we had, setting the targets for This was a conversation with our departments as well as our, um, data evaluation, um, department, our research team, that, uh, Dr. Brown, who helped us come up with so, so many of these goals, um, and targets. And so, uh, just sort of, uh, ultimate reason for the twenty-nine, uh, twenty-ninth, um, or twenty-nine percent of students is that just on that, uh, for any, any place in, in that is taking this, this MAP assessment, that, um, twenty-nine percent is really kind of where you would normally want to land on the bell curve. And that's probably the most technical way I can explain it, and Dr. Brown probably could explain it better than that. And so the, the target was set that way, but then we adjusted the targets, of course, for overall. Um, we adjusted the targets for our different student groups. So while it looks like the thirty percent, um, going to the twenty-nine percent itself for all students does not seem like a very lofty goal, what we want to really focus on and what we decided would be the most meaningful part of that target was whether or not our most marginalized groups were making the most gains to be the student groups that help us reach our goal. What we'd like to do is far surpass the twenty-nine, for sure. What we'd like to do is far surpass the twenty-nine, for sure. But what we want to do, no matter what, is to make sure that our most marginalized students are making the biggest gains. It would be, I think it would just be, I know that Lone Star Governance has, you know, we disaggregate, but it has an all-student goal. But what we really are looking at internally and just in our practices and what we believe is the movement of those students. If those are the students that really help us reduce the overall number, then I think that we'll feel like we've reached the the target in a much more meaningful way. And again, we we would personally like to go lower than that twenty-nine. And I think we can continue to have those discussions as we set, as we set targets. I know this, this is set for the next five years, but as we, as we look at things and make sure that it's still meaningful, I think we can continue to have those discussions for what matches really our student group and how they're performing.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. And thank you to the superintendent in the board update of putting some examples of the newsletter that you guys were describing. It was really great for us to be able to see it and read it and see what's going on to our families, those of us who don't have kids who it's coming to. So thank you for that. And I loved that there were connections to things happening in the city. So it was, thank you for sharing that with us. Yeah. Trustee Hunter?
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, I have a clarification. I just want to make sure, I try to listen as my, I imagine that my families will bother with their jobs and their time to actually watch these programs. But if they are, I I try to listen like they would listen. And I want to make, I want to clarify what I heard. What I believe I heard was that trustee Gonzalez asked about the materials and like, are they really being used? And the response was like, yeah, we're figuring that part out because we don't have really way to quantify it. What I heard was that in the next time, we're going to have some maybe different or other more materials for band two and three. Did I hear that correctly?
One and two.
Okay. Because what I thought I heard was two and three.
If I said two and three, I meant one and two.
Okay, yeah, I'm like, people heard that and I'm sure they were like, why would you be giving the more resources to people who have less gap?
No, everything in the system is responding to our
Yes.
resource index. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Like I said, I try to listen like, like, people gonna catch me in the grocery store, gonna hear it. And then I, this is not aligned to LSD at all. Probably breaking four rules right now. I'm really concerned about materials, and maybe that's on the next section, we could talk about that, on materials that are sent to parents that are generic, right? I I want us like, you know, you know, how to do math when you cooking Easter dinner, right? How to do reading when you at the wash interior, you know what I'm saying? Like, how can you, because I'm at the wash interior, I got the kids with me, let's read some words. That's the reality, right? When you have time between my two jobs and my other three kids? No. I literally had a teacher this week tell me, she was having a problem and the teacher was like, hey, take this home. She goes, that's why I bring him here. I teach all day. So if if there's like differentiation in resources, I love that they're in different languages. I think that's awesome. But like, you know, during Ramadan, here's how you can bring in more math, right? During, if you, if you're practicing Lent and you're abstaining from that, here's, you know, whatever it is, so that it's responsive to our community. Oh, I was just asking.
Yeah. I think that's, it's an evolution of an improved system. I I think, you know, when we are capable of delivering that and measuring kind of how it's used and we're a little further along, I think that opportunity may may exist. I think, I think it's going to be challenging to break it up kind of campus by campus. If it, I just, I just, I want to think through kind of what that would look like, just because differentiation is across what we distribute is going to be challenging scale-wise to implement over and over and over again.
Yeah.
So I just, I'd want to kind of think through what that would look like. But I think over the course of the year, you know, using different kind of examples or different experiences and acknowledging that maybe, you know, we've been targeting a certain, you know, lived experience and maybe it's different lived experience may be appropriate now and just kind of, you know, approach it that way, at least initially. I'd have to think through how to do that though.
It's like, think about church leaflets, like, just choose your own adventure. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hunter. Trustee King-Tom.
I would love to help you with that project superintendent. You know, I was one of the kids who my aunt didn't have a lot of time to sit down with me at home. And I really relied on staying after school and doing after-school tutorials to get that extra help. And so I think that the resources that trustee Hunter mentioned are absolutely necessary and probably more households than you think. And kind of keeping with this theme of trying to hear the the answers or the the words that y'all are saying from a parent's point of view or a community member's point of view. When y'all answered the question on why there was a one-point difference just now, right, trustee Gonzalez asked a question about why our goal went up or went down or went up one point. I would love if you could explain that to me like I was a fifth grader because I got lost in that answer. And I imagine if I'm lost, then maybe we have some folks at home who are lost too.
So I think ultimately what, how we ended up with a one-point change in the all-student target as we have to set the goal on all students was we were already at thirty percent of our students overall being recommended for, or scoring at the recommended for intervention range. And we're only going down to the target of twenty-nine. The reason the target is only one-point difference to a twenty-nine is really based on how the assessment is made and how NWA, we worked also, I know our department consulted with NWA on setting that target, on what would be a reasonable target for the way that the assessment is made for all students. But what we're saying is, even though it's only going down one point for all students, again, we'd like to beat that target, is watching the movement of our most marginalized student groups make the most growth over time to be able to change that big, larger goal and reduce that by at least one percentage point, but hopefully more. Did that, does anyone have a better way to?
No, I think I get it now. And I have follow-up questions, but they're not fully formed yet. So I'll get back to you. Thank you.
I think the one thing I could say is, you could hit the goal and do it in a way that's in line with our values, right? I mean, you could have a large, a large student population who isn't identified as historically underserved, meet all of their goals and go down twenty-eight, go down twenty-eight percent because such a large percent of the total student population. Why we show it this way is because our goal is actually to improve the make progress on the students who actually represent, in many cases, not all cases, but a smaller percent of the total student population. Right? So African-American students or black students are six point four percent. And so that's why the big number is not the focus. The the numbers below it are really what we're pushing on.
So that one percentage point would would be our marginally, our historically marginalized communities? That's where we would see that? That's why?
I I think the the one percent is we're, I guess, best practice and and one, thirty percent is already, I think, a a number that, you know, defined by NWA as far as proficiency indicator is a healthy number, thirty percent, right? And so the goal for us is to get below that. But because as a whole, we're already there, our focus is getting all of the student groups that have been historically underserved that we are reporting on to contribute to it, that's our focus, which is why we show it this way. It's kind of hard to describe it any other way, but I I do want to point out that if we didn't have the student groups beneath it shown this way, you could mask really all of that. And that's the opposite of what we want to do.
Okay. And that data will be disaggregated?
It is.
It is. I know, I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, so page seven shows the disaggregation of the the percentage points. So you can see all students is thirty percent trying to get to twenty-nine or twenty-four, twenty-five. And then you can see how the trends look beneath it in those margins between where we are and where we want to go.
Thank you.
More questions?
I was just saying, my questions have been answered, even though I'm, I'm struggling not to answer questions about normal distributions right now. But maybe that's something for a future, future math lesson. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Deoriosi.
I just had one quick question, and I don't know if I maybe missed it throughout the discussion, but kind of going to trustee Hunter and Gonzalez, some of the questions they ask, and I think Dr. Kaufman as well, but you know, I, page nine, ten, you're talking about some of the root cause analysis on on the specific campuses or the specific populations that aren't showing response. And I was curious, is there information on on kind of the opposite end of it? I mean, there's a lot of different, there's at least several different elements to the approaches that we're trying on the different campuses. And so when we're seeing the improvements and what's working, are we going deeper and looking specifically on, you know, which are the parts that are working? Do we know that it's the same thing working on every campus or, you know, different parts?
Yeah, so that that is part of the work that we're doing now in the spring that we have some of these outliers and starting to do this for literacy and actually math too, that we'll be reporting on next month, is is going out and visiting those campuses and seeing that happen. I actually really appreciate Dr. Kaufman's suggestion, though, to try to quantify that as well as we're looking at other campuses to say, okay, these things are working and you've said they're working and we think that they're definitely high-quality. Really trying to quantify that compared to what's happening on other campuses. So it could be everyone's using it or everyone's implementing it, but with what quality, with what fidelity, and starting to kind of make some of those judgments there and and learn from that as well. But yeah, we're already out on campuses looking for those those things and talking to people. And you may want to speak more to that too with what some of the EDs are doing. But it's it's part of the, it's part of the work as we identify outliers to just regularly go out and see those and have those conversations.
Yeah, and I would say one thing that we do that does sort of quantify some of the work is the MTSS implementation rubric. We have meetings with principals or EDs that are using kind of a criteria list to look at how effective the MTSS implementation is. And so we do see that on our outlier campuses, we have stronger MTSS systems in place. But I agree that that being able to quantify some of the PLC work, I haven't wrapped my brain around that quite yet, but I like the idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's kind of where I was going from trustee Gonzalez, like asking about the materials and, you know, if we know that they're being used everywhere or that, you know, the implementation is consistent, because I'm just wondering with the variation in some of the numbers, you know, one campus is using some of the stuff and then the different one is using different stuff.
And I would just to add, like, we have seen in the business that we have done and the progress monitor, campuses are truly using the curriculum intended, how it is with fidelity, the results are showing. Also at the end of the assessments and also on the map data. And the principals and the coaches can say, our data shows because our students are progressing. But when we're not being consistent in using as said intended, and so sometimes it's like, oh, I get to choose this lesson, but I skip the next one and maybe I get to, you know, they get to choose and pick sometimes implementation, no, it's not as fidelity. Like you were saying, the results are not being as you expected. But the one campuses are truly are like the outlier ones. We have seen the walkthrough and it has been an amazing progress.
And I would just add that I was even, in addition to just hearing what teachers are saying that's working for them, trying to figure out are we having changes in teacher vacancy rates or certification rates? Most of our outlier campuses and even in our band one campuses, vacancy rates are going down. Certification rates are not necessarily going down, so that was interesting data. But it was another layer of data I was trying to tie to some of the success, although it doesn't speak to necessarily second grade specifically. It kind of speaks to the whole campus. But really what stood out is just teachers saying that coming together in PLCs and collaborating with each other and having support, even though that's anecdotal data, was just, it was strong.
And the one thing I would, I would add is, you know, where I think our trustees want to go is precisely where we are going. It's, you know, we we have inputs, we we are trying to track outputs, right, so that we can ensure that outcomes will move. And we just listed like five or six different outputs, right? Now, we as a system have to be able to measure that those outputs are actually moving. And you brought up a good one, like the infidelity of PLCs, like how do we know? You know, well, what's the tool that we're going to use? How long to take to build it? Like, there are lots of things like that. But for me, I think as we move out of the spring semester and kind of refine the monitoring reports, you know, perhaps even considering adjustments in the structure of the document to like track key outputs that ensure that the implementation plan is being completed with fidelity, because you would assume if outputs are moving, then outcomes would also follow if it's a research-based, you know, implementation plan or strategy. So I I think that's, that's what we've talked about for a while. And I think that's a place that we're going to be going, especially as the initiatives refine and progress.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Foster, you have anything?
I do, and I'm trying to sort of get my thoughts together. And I think this is in the report. But I'm curious about MAP assessments in English and language, if you're in, if you're in DL. So just help me understand the use of MAP testing as we're also gauging proficiency into languages.
So what we do for dual, I'm sorry, did you?
No.
Okay. So what we, what we do for dual-language students in the second grade level is, is, well, for different levels and assessments, it's a, it's a different structure, but we take the best of. And so a student assessing in both English and Spanish to honor where that student is in their language learning, we take the best of as we're reporting this information. Now, what campuses do is still have two languages worth of assessments. And so what you can do with that information, instructionally and just to inform yourself on the student, is really look at where they are in English, look at where they are in Spanish, and consider actually both of those things together, which is a more additive way to look at it. It's more of a bilingual way to look at assessments rather than a monolingual way to look at assessments, although we frequently, when we're talking about assessments up here, it's a very monolingual lens. But we take for this the the best of, like I said, because students can be progressing in different languages at different times. And so we want to honor the student and where they are in that language learning. So it could be that they are still scoring very well in in Spanish, and so they're not below the fortieth percentile in their Spanish assessment. It could be that they're below in their English assessment, but because they're still progressing at an appropriate rate in their native language in second grade, that would be something that we would take that, that best of for in in the English language. And when you're in the dual-language program, it takes about six years, according to research, to really be proficient in both languages. So we wouldn't expect to see, for people that, for students that have started at the earliest age, wouldn't expect to see that proficiency until around sixth grade if they've been in the program that whole time.
And I think I'll just ask some, some follow-up questions in the tracker. I'm really trying to deep dive and understand how our students are progressing in terms of their bilateral proficiency. And, you know, sort of really trying to understand the shift in instruction over time in terms of, you know, which language for which. And it's immensely confusing for those of us for whom this is not our wheelhouse. So thanks for the initial answer and I'll just follow up on the tracker.
Sure.
Thank you. So we're at eighty-three minutes, so I don't have many questions. And thank you for all the questions that you answered ahead of the meeting. I have just one that I know you answered in the tracker, but I think it's really helpful to me. When you look at several groups of students show these really big improvements fall to fall. And the improvements winter to winter were smaller. And I know you touched on it a little bit. But I think it, when you don't understand kind of the underlying stuff, it looks like they're really slowing down in their progress. And I'd just love a little more information about what you're seeing and kind of how we understand those really big fall-to-fall gains and those smaller winter-to-winter gains.
Yeah, so just touched on this a little bit earlier, but when you're looking at fall-to-fall gains, a student has started at the very fall-to-fall gains, a student has started at the very beginning sort of RIT score that year, and they've had the benefit of an entire year of instruction. And then we see what's happened, like from all of first grade, for example, looking at second grade store, and then seeing how they scored in second grade, and then, of course, you know, the same cycle for second to third grade. And so those students, what we're seeing basically is a full year's worth of movement, growth, you know, being able to be in school. The winter is a little trickier, you'll see less movement in the winter. Also, as a district, we assess early in the winter window. We could assess in January, but because our students tend to have other assessments coming in January, we try to space that out as well as possible. This is something we work with our district and our campus personnel as well on setting the assessment calendar. And so it's actually a very small window between fall and winter. And so depending on just the progression rate of that cohort of students at that time, you may see less growth or greater growth, just depending on their rate of growth and progress in their learning from the fall-to-winter assessment. So really, we're talking from a September to a December, short, pretty short window. And then that student continues to get learning all the next year, and so you see more gains in spring to spring, or, like I said, and fall to fall. So that's one of the ways. Also, just this last year, we had a little bit less growth for that winter piece, and we have been implementing a lot this year. And we had just started training on our, so this is personal to our system, but we had just started training on all of our teachers, October 3rd was when we pulled everyone for all of the resources. If you were an elementary teacher, you got all of it. If you were an elementary dual-language teacher, you got twice of all of it, because it was English and Spanish. And so they were just learning and just implementing all of those great interventions. And so, you know, that's, again, a short window. They got it done in an unbelievable way, I will tell you that. We've seen some really amazing interventions happen on campuses. So they've been doing an amazing job, but it's, all of that kind of compounded with probably a little slower growth that we saw in the winter.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then I have a question for the superintendent, which is, I know the report, and you explained that there's not a method for on-track for this, and I know that's something that we need in our reports and that this is new, right? This is a new GPM, so we're still getting to that. And so what do we need to get that so we can have that answer next time?
Well, I think the, one of the things that we need to discuss administration with the board is recognizing that each definition of on-track is going to change based on the methodology within the goal-progress measure. So in some cases, it's a percent, in some cases, it's an actual number, there are always, there's always variance. And then given where you are and where you want to go, is it, you know, is it, if you're within one and a half or two percent, is that on-track? Is it, you know, something wider than that? And so what we're wanting to do is to really understand, you know, goal-progress measure by goal-progress measure, what should we use instead of just applying one uniformly across all of them? That being said, it's easier said than done. It is not that simple. Dr. Jay Brown and others have been exploring this, and we've run into kind of little barriers along the way. And I think, you know, for me, as we move forward, maybe one effort, you know, as we close out the spring semester, would be to kind of revisit that and see if we can come up with a methodology that we could apply and that we're comfortable with. But, you know, by Lone Star Governance, you know, we need something that we can kind of use and have it be tangible, and we just don't have a methodology that works uniformly. It's actually quite difficult. So a better way to say that, you know, that's why we tend to say we're trending in the right direction, because, you know, hard to define on-track, and certainly if not all student groups are on-track, we wouldn't want to say it. But as a system, it appears that our students are beginning to move, which is what's encouraging.
That is very, that is very encouraging and very exciting, thank you. And I look forward to our spring one. And then I have one more question. There was a lot of conversation, again, as there was at our last meeting, about the investments that seem to be making a difference. And I know we're in a moment where we're seeing progress based on the investments, where we, you know, it's really clear that people in our system know what we need to get, to help our students get where they need to be, and we're at a moment where we're talking about difficult budget cuts. And so what do you need from us as we continue working through that process to kind of keep this front and center?
President Boswell, I think I really, really, really appreciate that question. I think a lot of it has already started. I think the work session we had two weeks ago was very helpful. I think for us as an organization and as a team of 10 and, you know, board, coming to consensus and defining, you know, what we want the quality of education in Austin ISU to be, and that protecting it is what we are going to do. And we just had multiple examples, whether it's a constructional coach or a content interventionist, you know, do we want to accept a school system where we cannot provide that uniformly across all the students that need it? Or do we want to take on other difficult conversations that allow us to get to a place where we can? And so that conversation will come again shortly after spring break, but I think as long as we're talking about it, and perhaps even as a board, you know, making a statement around kind of our values and what we want to protect as we go through this process, that would be immensely helpful. So I don't know if that answered the question or not, but that is something I think that would go a long way for us as we move forward.
I think that's helpful, and it brings us right back to this conversation we're having, right? You know, that we have every, every meeting when we talk about our goals and the investments that are mattering. So yeah, thank you, that's very helpful to me. Anyone else? We good? All right. Thank you all so much for all of this, and it is exciting to see some real movement. And thank you trustees for the conversation. And now it's time to vote on whether we will accept the monitoring report. And as a point of clarity, we're voting to accept this report as a formal acknowledgement that we had a satisfactory conversation with the superintendent and have a deeper understanding about the currently, how the current reality for students aligns with our vision for them. And at this point, I'll entertain a motion for accepting the monitoring report.
I move to accept the monitoring report.
Thank you, Secretary Gonzalez. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, trustee Quintana. Having a motion by Secretary Gonzalez and a second by trustee Quintana to accept the monitoring report, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, and the motion passes by all those on the dais. Thank you to everyone for taking part in our shared commitment for students and student So next up is a presentation on Scorecard or a chance to ask questions about Scorecard Constraint 2.1, our caregiver engagement. And the presentation has been recorded, it's available in Board Docs through the link in the Agenda item. And Lone Star Governance lists our constraint Scorecard items as adult focus time. So today's discussion is not considered student outcome minutes. We've scheduled 30 minutes, and before our discussion, we need to confirm that the monitoring report is complete. Does anyone have evidence that the elements are not present? All right. Since everyone agrees the required elements are present, we'll turn the floor over to Superintendent Segura again.
Thank you, President Boswell. I'd like to welcome up Ali Gilarducci, Chief Officer of Communications and Community Engagement, to answer any questions regarding Constraint Progress Measure 2.1, which is in support of Constraint 2. And the Constraint 2 reads as, "The superintendent shall not allow families to be without meaningful partnerships with their home, campus, and district." The Constraint Progress Measure that was approved by the board states that the number of campuses that develop and meet a goal in their Campus Improvement Plan, or CIP, based on the Dual Capacity Building Framework for Family-School Partnerships will increase from a baseline in June of 2025, which is this current year, by Y in June of 2029. And so as you mentioned, there was a presentation that was uploaded to Board Docs, and it's available for everybody to go on and view. The one thing I want to maybe mention before we kind of jump into questions is that this is a new item, new methodology, new rubric, and so it's certainly in draft form. Ali and her team have done a good job of kind of pulling the resources that we've had previously, but we're certainly looking for input and kind of guidance as we move forward, because this is, as I mentioned, a baseline year. So we do have the opportunity to refine and improve the tool to ensure that it does meet the expectation of the board. And then as we move forward into next year, we'll be able to implement the tool with fidelity and then support our campuses as they kind of move towards reaching this goal, which we think is, we could actually establish a very aggressive goal based on our initial assessment of where we are.
Good, thank you for that. And just to start us off, I really, I appreciate all of the thought and creativity and strategy that has to go into creating something brand new from a, with a goal that can feel fuzzy because it's about people, it's not about a test score, it's not about something measurable. And so I see a rubric, I see, you know, that the GPM that the administration brought to us is aligned with the Dual Capacity Building Framework. And I would just kind of love a little, I think it would help us to understand kind of how the rubric and the framework kind of came together to kind of come up with what we were looking at.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Ali Gilarducci, Chief of Communications, Community Engagement. So my thought process in developing the rubric, and as Superintendent Segura said, we are very welcome to evolving it and getting it where it needs to be. This is the formative self-assessment that was taken in November, and so there's still the summative assessment. And so I want to make sure we're in a place where we all agree on the tool before we apply it, so that final end of year data and set those targets. But my thinking on it was, if you're looking at the report, back in 2018, the board actually adopted a policy around what family and community engagement should look like, and it created, and it wanted it to align with the priorities of the Dual Capacity Framework. And so it had six standards that were included there around partnership programs, and it uses language called partnership programs. And what it means is any activities that are established to develop and facilitate and foster and nurture partnerships with families, seeing families as partnerships in the education of students, not just the campus and school as the givers of information and the students as the receivers and the families as the receivers, right? But how do we create reciprocal partnerships so that they can both be working to support one another in that child education? So the six standards were communicating, parenting, and that just means, the parenting is about establishing, helping families establish home environments that are also supportive of student learning, and then student learning so that all, the part, the engagement efforts are centered around helping build the skills that the school is trying to build and that the family is assisting in that, and what role they can play in that. Volunteering, school decision-making, and then collaborating family-school and community partnerships. So what we did, because the way the CPM is written, it says it's looking at how many campuses established a goal that aligns with this framework and then, of course, achieves that goal. And so I was looking at, you know, some of the campuses have goals in the areas of communication or in the areas of volunteering. And so then I took, looked at those goals and then said, does this, you know, does it not meet at all? Does it really not demonstrate an understanding of the Dual Capacity Framework? Does it meet, or sorry, does it approach, meaning that it has some elements of it, but it's not, it's not getting where, like if they accomplish their goal, wonderful, yay, but I still don't think that they've, they've got that level of depth of understanding of that reciprocal relationship, that it's, it might be a little more, and I mentioned this in the report, it might be more about, there's a lot that are about getting more participation, right? And participation is, is great, it can be an indication that you're building relationships with families, but there's no indication that just because a family is present, right, that their gifts and skills are being tapped into to create that reciprocal relationship to support the child's education. So those types of goals kind of landed in that approaches category. And then to be in the master's level category, right, we needed to see that there was a clear understanding from the campus that the goals that they're setting, that they understand that whatever, that if it's accomplished, then you've created the conditions for families to feel like they are invited and equal partners in developing a school environment, a home environment, that supports the child's education. And so we did not have a lot of campuses that reached that level. And of course, because it was the formative assessment in November, we did not have any that both developed at master's level and met at that time.
Thank you, that's super helpful framing for understanding. Trustees, any questions about this? Trustee Kaufman?
So I, oh, Ali, I appreciate the structure for how to really measure whether things are happening and allowing for the differentiation by campuses to prioritize different aspects of the engagement and the working with our families. My question is, can you just, the examples that were in the presentation of the three campuses, kind of spoke to some of the changes we're actually seeing on campuses based on this work? Can you just give us a short overview of some of the actual actions that you're seeing that are behind these goals? Because the goals are very, you know, yes or no. But can you describe just a little bit of what we're seeing for family engagement that's improving?
Yes, and so for the campuses that I listed as outliers, that we did reach out to those campuses to kind of talk to them about what they're doing, and...
And I'm wondering more like globally, like what are some things that you're seeing increasing?
Commonalities, you mean?
Yeah, not just those three, because we read those three and you saw them in your presentation. What are some things that you're seeing across all the campuses that we're seeing progress on?
Progress on.
More engagement by families?
I don't know that my assessment was looking at necessarily progress, because I was looking at it as like, where do we stand at this moment? But as far as the progress that they've made in developing their goals, that actually was another area of growth that I identified. If you look into the, the Plan for Learning is the tool that campuses use to record their goals and their progress. And there is a place in Plan for Learning for them to, it's called Evidence of Progress. There honestly were very few, people gave, said where their progress was, but there was very little information about what the evidence of progress was. But if I understand your question, you're wanting to understand what I see as our strengths in, like as a district, where we stand right now?
Just, what this shows is progress in setting goals and achieving the goals, right? I mean, that's kind of what the report is, the measure is asking for, is how many campuses are effectively setting good goals and then attaining them. I'm wondering just if we can flesh this out a bit more with what are the, what are the changes in the actual caregiver engagement that are happening?
That are causing problems.
As a result of setting good goals and achieving them?
Yeah, so some of the things that I think were positive indicators to me in the goals that were like either got that master's or approaches, it, for me, I was really looking for, it's a lot about mindset in terms of, again, it's wonderful to set a goal to increase participation in your campus advisory council, right? That's a fine goal to have. It's not a goal that's necessarily aligned with Dual Capacity Building Framework, because you would want to see, you can run a CAC meeting that is very one-directional, right? We give the information, we maybe give space for parents to talk, and that's it, right? But say you are talking about, there is a requirement that they talk about their campus improvement plan at the CAC, right? So say you set, say you invite your families to let's look at together our campus climate results, right? And you invite your families to say, what do you think are the reasons behind these scores that our campus is getting? We're really strong here, we're not so strong there. And you invite families to come and think about strategies with you that the campus can implement and how they can be a part of those strategies. That would be a way that I would see that those families are not just being asked to like sign off on, oh, yes, we talked about the CIP, but we were actually invited to problem-solve and develop goals with, right? And so some of the, for example, I, you know, I used web as one example, they did not get master's level, but I think that they did show a lot of language that shows that they were starting to see the benefit of, you know, you mentioned talking about, they used to do a lot of talking at families, and they've been spending a lot more time listening to families, and that they've used that listening to then shape the kinds of things that they do in the future. So I feel like those were the kinds of things that I was looking for, to show that the campus is starting to recognize the benefits that come when it's not just, we're going to talk about this, you're going to sit and get, and then, yay, we had more people, right?
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Teoriostee?
Yeah, just a quick question on the page 11. You talk about the CACs and that there's not currently a real-time tracking for that. Are there any ideas or how are we going to explore that? And I'm kind of curious, maybe attach that in a similar way for PTAs. I know we're partnering with a PTA, but how are we tracking this?
Yeah, absolutely. So when I was working on this, I was trying to find kind of alignment in things that already exist or are part of things that we already do, and then how do we take them from being a thing that we like, yes, check, we do this, and how do we make sure that we're doing this in a way that's building those capacities and that partnership with families? And so our CACs right now, I think, and historically, we have just asked, give us your rosters, let us know they're happening, right? your rosters, let us know they're happening, right? And so, what we would like to do, I've actually talked to GA who works, she works to support the campus advisory councils. And we have not actually kind of developed a plan of what this could look like just yet, but we've talked about, how do we move beyond compliance? Yes, they have a CAC, yes, they have an agenda, yes, looks like it happened, right? And move on to what kinds of resources can we provide to principals to help them, like the example that I gave about, okay, so when you're having your, your meeting where you talk about your campus improvement plan, instead of just being like, here's the plan we've developed, everyone good, right? How do we help them facilitate those conversations around that? Same thing goes for developing resources for principals to give examples about when they go over campus, their, their campus academics and accountability scores, right? It's one thing to share them with families, it's another thing to share them with families and say, here's some of the efforts we've been making to try to move the needle on this. How do we think that families could support, support this campus and moving, and moving these numbers more? So, giving them more ways to make the CAC more, more meaningful and more inviting of families to really be involved in that decision-making.
And could you speak just a little bit to the PTA part?
Yeah. So, PTA, we do not, so, we're not the ones that are the keepers of the tracking of the, the PTA, but we do have, I meet monthly, I'm actually the superintendent's proxy with the ACPTA board. And we, so, I reference in the report, the Austin ISD Stronger Together Initiative. I actually shared that with ACPTA last time that we met, and we are going to set up a session to kind of dig into it together and figure out, because one thing that we've realized is that we, as a district, could be doing a better job of, of partnering with our ACPTA, which would then support their efforts on, at the campus level. Simple things that we've talked about, even just establishing, there's plenty about, maybe not plenty, there's a fair amount in board policy about what PTAs should be like in our schools, but right now, you have to dig through different places in policy to find that, right? So, how do we create a resource to show this is what a healthy campus PTA partnership looks like and, and supporting it? And so, that way, when, especially when ACPTA is out and talking with principals, sometimes there's uncertainty from a principal, well, can we do that? Or can we spend money this way? Or are we allowed to use communications that way by creating a resource where principals can see, like, the guidelines essentially? And that, that, yes, these are district, like, we, the district does support campuses engaging with PTAs in these ways. We actually encourage it, right? And making that more explicit and easily available and referenced.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate the inclusion of that, because I do think encouraging more campuses to, to engage directly with that will be a huge benefit.
Thanks. I agree.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Hunter?
Pardon me. Not a question, but more of a wondering about, I feel like in, with the rubric, we're kind of grading ourselves, right? And like, how can we bring parents in? Like, what part do parents get to play in? Because, I mean, they get to decide, right? We don't really get to decide how well we're doing with them. They get to decide how well we're doing with them. And so, along with that, I just, I guess I want to go back and, because I know it's based on the policies of 2018, I want to, because I, I just don't know that I've looked at them other than here, to make sure that we're still aligned, right? They're, they're aligned with our values right now. I'm not throwing shade, but before, they said they were, you know, as my grand, Granny Ray would say, they were talking out of the side of their neck, and both sides of their mouth, because they don't align. They don't align. So, I just want to make sure that what we are saying now and what they said then is aligned. Thank you.
Yeah. And Trustee Hunter, appreciate the comment. The one thing I would say in response is, you know, the, the policy was, I think, helped inform this initial iteration of the tool. We recognize that, you know, dual capacity framework is, is much bigger and broader than the policy that was drafted in, in 2018 and accepted. But we welcome the opportunity to kind of explore, you know, how do you kind of lean into the framework and then perhaps build a policy out of that work, opposed to just kind of relying on the policy. But given this is a new tool, new process, new rubric, we wanted to start somewhere that was familiar and something that was structured. And so, the feedback's been helpful and we'll, you know, build that out and move forward and engage to improve the, the constraint progress measure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Everyone else's questions asked and answered?
Asked and answered.
Asked and answered? Okay, good. Well, thank you so much for this. And trustees, thank you for the conversation. Thank you for all the work and the thought and the information. Really appreciate it. And now, it's time to vote on whether we will accept the monitoring report. And as a point of clarity, again, we are voting to accept this report as a formal acknowledgement that we had a satisfactory conversation with superintendent and have a deeper understanding about how the current reality for students lines up with our vision for them. So, at this point, I'll entertain a motion for accepting this report.
I move to accept the report.
Trustee Quintana, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so, okay, having a motion from Trustee Quintana and a second by Trustee Hunter to accept the monitoring report, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. And thank you for taking part again in another shared commitment to students and student outcomes. Thank you, Ms. Gilarducci. And now, we're going to move to our information reports and updates. We have 30 minutes scheduled for tonight's report. The item does count for student outcomes time as it's focused on requirements under our TEA approved order. This is our regular TEA agreed order update. And Mr. Segura, will you please introduce the item again?
Absolutely. President Boswell, thank you. I'd like to welcome Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief Officer, Government Relations, and Board Services to share the TEA Special Education Agreed Order Update. Jacob, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Boswell. And Superintendent Segura, I'm Board of Trustees. So, tonight, I want to provide an update on our TEA Agreed Order. As we've shared previously, our TEA Agreed Order has five priorities, I'm sorry, four priorities, and then the Lone Star Governance Section. We have made progress on this since we've last met, but you can see that we do still have priorities remaining under Priority Two. We also have ongoing priorities under Three and Four. And then, under LSG, we still have a commitment to complete additional quarterly evaluations. And I'll go through all that in just a moment. So, looking through these first, we want to continue to highlight that Priority One is complete. This was our priority to close all of our corrective action plans. So, these were the original complaints brought to TEA and back to the district that first led to the concerns and to the agreed order. So, we have satisfied all of those and closed out all of those corrective action plans. Priority Two is still ongoing, and we do provide our MTSS quarterly updates, so I won't get into too much depth on the MTSS. But we do want to share that since we've last met, we have completed the tier MTSS courses for all of our new campus leaders and campus staff members. So, last time we talked about this, we had covered it for all current staff, staff who had been here prior to the start of the year. Now, we've completed it for all of our new staff. We also provided that first MTSS update to the board back in the fall. Upcoming, the big thing is really our MTSS progress report. Through to the end of the year, we are required to prepare a progress report presented to the board and share it with TEA. And this will include data on our universal screenings for all of our campuses, broken down by campus. It'll also provide data on the student identification for Tier Two and Tier Three under MTSS and our intervention entry and exit data. So, we're looking forward to sharing that with you later this school year and then sharing with TEA, which will bring us very close to completing all the requirements under Priority Two. So, Priority Three has ongoing requirements that we are still working through. So, that includes the data systems. And one big item that I want to talk on, because we've shared earlier a lot about the reports that we submit to TEA. And as you know, there were concerns still with the reporting data. And so, as part of that discussion with TEA and really thinking through what's going to be best for our students and best support our staff, we did start a transition of our data management system. So, I want to give a brief update on that. So, this work really started in the fall of 2024. And we really set out, what are we trying to accomplish here? And set out a series of engagements so we could start listening to staff at the beginning. So, we conducted a staff survey, which had 450 responses. We actually, we also held listening sessions with campus staff, sped staff, and families and community members, which had 91 attendees overall. And that led to our RFP process. So, our overall purpose with this new special education data management system was to ensure that we had a system that covered four items that we need this system to oversee for us. That includes our IEP process, our service tracking process, our 504 process, and then one that we don't talk about as much, but is actually really important as well, is our Medicaid and SHARs process. Because for a lot of the services that we provide through special education, we can actually receive reimbursement through the SHARs process. So, we then developed three phases, and Superintendent Segura created a work group that is led by Joshua Jung and also includes chief officers, staff from special education. And then, we then work back out with our parent committee, the Special Education Family Advisory Committee, to then bring in some additional voice into the work that we're doing on that. So, our three phases were our vendor selection. We really started that around November. And as you know, and we want to make sure that our community knows as well, that we've been sharing out since December, that we did contract with Frontline Education for the plan and service management solution. So, it also so happens that Frontline is our ERP system. And so, those will work together with some of those, some of the data needs, which will be helpful for the district as well. Once we started that, we moved into Phase Two, which was System Integration in Professional Development Preparation. And then, of course, our third phase will be the actual implementation of professional development and our continuous improvement of the implementation of that program. So, for helping us to prepare for what are the professional development needs and what are some of the system integration considerations that we need to make, we have started focus groups in January and February. We held two with teachers, one with principals, with staff here in central office, 504 staff, central office staff, also including SHARs. And then, we've also started just recently our Train the Trainers, so that we have experts here at central office and at our campuses who can then go out and train our campuses. That makes it a lot more flexible for us for training, and also, it is a more cost-efficient process for the district overall for our training needs. So, I want to share a little bit more about our data systems and what work is ongoing. So, we actually have eight concurrent projects happening all at once right now. That includes our data migration, so from the old system to our new system. That includes the application configuration to make sure that this is going to be set up in a way that's usable by our teachers and gives them the information that we need. The data validation, so of course, we need to move the data, but then we need to make sure that the data is set up in the way that we need it. Our change management, which also includes our communication process. We have our professional learning project, which is aligned with our professional development. We have our access integration. We also have our PCG offboarding. Because while we moved to one system, we also need to recognize that our current system has a lot of data in it. That's really important, and we can't just lose that data. We can't just hope that it transitioned over and now we're set. So, there's a lot of work also on just how do we offboard of the old system? And then, of course, we need to create the TEA reporting that the state is requiring us to submit to them in August. So, some upcoming milestones. We'll continue with focus groups in May, and we'll also start our central office and summer staff training. We are hoping for a system launch in July. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say we're hoping.
There's no hoping.
We are launching in July. And we'll also work with our campus administration at that point on training for the new system. And then, all special education staff will receive training when they return back on contract in August. So, before I move out of Priority Three, I'll just leave us with three important priorities, and that's the continuous engagement with our staff and our stakeholders and our community members. Making sure that we have good training for our special education staff, and then that there's on-demand support for all this work, all the way through fall of 2025. Because come August, we need to report to TEA, but we, more importantly, we need to make sure that our teachers have a system that's usable to help support our students when they return back to school, so that they can then get them the supports that they need on day one.
That's really meaningful, definitely.
So, then I want to talk on the last priority, which is establishing a parent outreach campaign. This is complete, but it is still ongoing, because our Special Education Family Advisory Committee continues to meet. And I want to make sure that our public knows and our board knows that our next meeting will be on April 28th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM here at central office. That is open to the public. They also do offer an opportunity for public comment, so we welcome the public to join that meeting, listen in, and share feedback. So, our very last item is our Lone Star Governance portion. We did complete, you, the board, completed your quarterly evaluation in January, where you were still at Meets Focus, and you will complete your next evaluation next month at the April 24th regular voting meeting. Another item that we completed is that our new trustees had completed the LSG two-day workshop. So, we once again have nine trustees who have completed LSG meeting that requirement. Finally, for my last item, I want to share about some of the trustee community engagement meetings around our scorecard and those upcoming meetings. We heard some questions during our discussion on Goal One today, and just want to let our community know that this is a great opportunity to bring questions that you may have about those scorecard items. And if we're meeting the goals that we say that we want to meet for our children, and are we meeting the vision we say we have for our students, come to these community meetings. So, we have four left in April, and we were also discussing potential other dates in May, but these are the ones that are scheduled right now in April. And that includes Palm Elementary on April 1st, Graham Elementary, April 3rd, Odom Elementary, April 17th, and Bertha Southern Means Young Women Leadership Academy, April 29th. While these are focused on a vertical team, we want to make sure our community knows that they're open to everyone across the whole community. You don't have to have a child or live in that vertical team. We welcome you to any or all of these meetings. And then, now I, now I regret that I didn't throw our QR code up here, but I'll also mention, we have a survey that is available for the public. You may not be able to attend the meeting, but you are able to still take that survey, and we have posted it on our website. It is under our District Board of Trustees for the Community Outreach. So, if you go to our website, click on our district, then Board of Trustees and Community Outreach, you'll find information about these meetings. You'll also find the link to our scorecard survey, which is currently open until May 1st. So, that is a summary of our current approved order, where we're at today, and I will open it up for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Reach. I appreciate that. Any questions? Trustee Kaufman?
It's not a question, but just a comment on the engagement meetings. I had the privilege of attending the meeting with Trustee Quintana at Travis High School, Travis Early College High School, and, and with Trustee Gonzalez as well, who mentioned the session that he attended with Trustee Foster at Padron. And I just want to say just how rewarding those conversations are with the students and the teachers who attended, and how important it is, you know, that we hear the voices of people. So, I really encourage our community to attend those meetings and to let us hear their voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Exciting to see three of the five priorities finished. Thank you. That's a big deal. I know everyone's been working really, really hard and, and just, I really appreciate the progress and the, the measurement and the celebration of it. So, that means good things for our kids and really appreciate that. Thank you. All right. This ends our section on information reports from the administration, and at this time, we'll move into the preview of agenda items that will be considered for a vote after spring break at the next regular board meeting on March 27th. And Austin and ISD staff is available to answer any questions for tonight's preview. We're beginning tonight with item number seven, the Agenda Preview for Upcoming Academics and Curriculum Items. Anyone have questions on those? All right. Next one is Section Eight, Board Administration. Do we have any questions on those? I think the one, I have a question, just a quick question. on eight point two, the Scorecard Monitoring Calendar, to make it more clear, kind of what we're doing, when? And when will we see that calendar? Since we don't have it to preview. It's not a drastic change. It's just a clarification.
Yeah, it is a clarification so that the public can see that we are monitoring these multiple times per year. And I am working with the board's LSG coach to make sure, because she's kind of that final sign-off, to make sure that it is reflecting what LSG is expecting. And we just weren't able to come to a final item for the Monday when we posted. But we're still working towards it and I have no doubt that we will have it up probably tomorrow, but certainly during spring break for sure.
Perfect. Thank you. People probably have better things to do over spring break, but I'm glad to know it'll be there. Thank you. Next section is item number nine, Business and Finance. Anyone have questions on these? Okay, we'll move on to ten, Facilities.
I actually do have one.
Oh, sorry. Back to mine. Yes, trustee Gonzalez. Yeah.
I was just waiting to see if anybody else. It's just, with our budget situation, I'm looking extra closely at whenever there's amendments, such as the one on nine point one. And I was wondering if anybody could speak to that. I noticed the adjustment is nearly ninety thousand dollars. Maybe the purpose or the necessity, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the question, trustee Gonzalez. Christine Steenport, Chief of Operations. This for nine point one, an approval of amendment for contract for water treatment services. This water treatment services is specifically around our HVAC systems that require chillers. These chillers sometimes will, as we do in Hill Country area, have lime and scaling. And they need those water treatment services in order to keep the school chiller running and the AC on in the schools.
Are chillers used on every campus?
No, we have several different types of systems and they vary around our school district. Some of our, we have RTUs, which are typical type units that could be rooftop or on the bottom. We have chillers in other campuses, several different types of systems.
We have geothermal as well.
Yeah.
At Martin Middle School, I'm not sure if this has been rectified yet, but I know that they had a chiller that would go on and off, on and off, and it would work one day and not work another day. And I was just wondering what sort of, if it is worth investing in an actual HVAC system in schools like that? If we would in the end save more money if we're not having to spend ninety thousand dollars to fix these chillers?
So, a chiller is a main component of an HVAC system. And so, they're one in the same. A chiller is just the way that the heat exchange occurs between cold water and the heat that's being pulled from the rooms themselves. And so, it is part of a larger HVAC system. I can look into General Marshall and understand maybe kind of what is happening there. A lot of times, there are technical components. General Marshall is a new, oh.
Martin Middle School.
Okay, sorry, Martin. I don't know why I heard General Marshall. I apologize. But I can look into, you know, kind of the components as to why. Overhaul of the chiller system would be, you know, millions of dollars. But we can, I can follow up. I'm not sure precisely.
Trustee Quintana, I can also look up as well. I believe that we did have a rental chiller there this summer as they were doing a replacement to keep that system going and that school cooled. But I'll follow up and get that with you.
Okay. Yeah, because I know that, you know, the second floor of the school would be really hot or really cold and then the first floor would not. So, would love to see how that works there. And do they get an HVAC update in their bond money or do?
I could look that up. Yeah. I believe they do, but I could follow up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I apologize. I was reading General Marshall from the content in the agenda item. That's.
Not to belabor this item, but I'm intrigued by the question that trustee Gonzalez asked regarding, kind of why is this type of expense a amendment? When it's kind of described as being a result of two new campuses coming online or a new campus coming online or a new system being put in? Are these, you know, in thinking about just being able to project our budget and plan accordingly, how, what is it about this type of expense that makes it a change mid-year rather than being planned for the long term? Thinking this is going to happen, we're going to need to have this money in the budget?
I can speak to this a little bit. So, we had, since approval of this contract, Hill Elementary School and Marshall Middle School have completed construction and modernization phases. And these are now in need of those water treatment services and hence the need for amendment.
Right. And that's what it says in the thing. But what I don't understand is we knew that General Marshall was going to come on board and we knew Hill was going to complete that construction. So, we knew that this was going to happen and they were going to come online. So, what is it that prevents us from having that additional amount budgeted at the beginning rather than changing? I just, I worry about seeing some things like this and then we come back again a month from now and say, oh, our budget deficit is now a hundred fifty million dollars because of these unexpected expenses. I'm just curious where this fits into the greater scheme of unexpected expenses that cause our budget deficit to increase mid-year?
Yeah. So, one of the things I've talked about a lot is making sure that we have budgets that reflect the actual expenses within Austin ISD. The, there are expenses that we incur annually tied to operation and maintenance that are not capitalized, meaning that we can't pay for them using bond proceeds. You know, anytime that you maintain equipment, which is what this expense is, we do have a budget item in our general operating budget, typically around five or six million dollars. But the reality is that for the last decade, it's been north of ten million. And so, as you move forward, it's really, really important that all of these things are included in our budget and we're sharing with our community and with our board, like, a budget that reflects actuals. I don't have a better way to say it. But yeah, so this would not be necessarily in a line item a year over year. What we would have is a general line item for maintaining chiller systems and then they would draw from that dollar amount. But it is budgeted, but you know, that's how we manage it.
Okay. So, rather than putting this in the unexpected expenses bucket, this might be more in line with the, let's make sure our budget accurately represents real spending so that we can have a more accurate budget next year and moving forward.
Correct. That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any more from Section Nine? Okay, thank you. Next section is number ten, Facilities. Trustee Hunter?
No, just thank you for the correction. I was a little nervous when I opened up the document. I was like, what are we doing? But I appreciate you correcting the document to read Austin ISD.
Thank you. Anyone else on that one? All right. Next is Section Eleven, Talent Strategy. Any questions there?
Just real quick, I'm just hoping to clarify so we know for the upcoming meeting, what is our communication process for? And what's our, how are we approaching reviewing these proposed terminations prior to our vote next meeting? Just to be clear on what the process is going to be.
Well, I think we've definitely decided they don't go on consent, that we vote on them one by one. And then we have the opportunity to have exec session before we vote on them. So, and do we want to automatically put them after exec session every time? What, have we reached a decision on that?
I think so, since we, I mean, we have to come out anyhow.
We have to come out anyway? Okay. Are you good with that? Okay.
And when will we receive, when will the information with the details be uploaded into our private documents?
Trustee Kaufman, we have a change to one of the items, one of the non-Chapter Twenty-One. The other items were uploaded right when the meeting started. So, they should, so they're on there under the exec. I did it. Yeah.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I looked just before they went up.
I did it during public comment.
Okay. Thank you. And I just want to note for anyone who is watching the meeting, the reason this is such an issue for me is to ensure that people understand that we take very seriously our legal responsibility in the state of Texas to review Chapter Twenty-One, especially contract terminations or non-renewals. And regardless of what Lone Star Governance says, that is a fundamental piece of our board's responsibility is to ensure that our employees and everyone is getting due process. So, while I have tremendous confidence in our human capital and our superintendent in respecting the due process and doing right by our employees and only taking the step of termination when it's necessary, I do also take seriously our responsibility as a board member to review that. And so, that's why I continue to ask these questions. Thank you.
I appreciate that and want to also say that we got real support from this, from our Lone Star Governance coach as well, that she was very supportive of making this move and said, in the district where she came from, she had done that. And especially because our council recommended it. Yes. So, I'm glad we're being more thoughtful about that and it's a big decision every time we do that for someone. So, thank you for that. And next section is number twelve, Other. Are there any questions on these items?
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Willey, too.
All right. Thank you. So, item twelve is a big change from the plans that like our real estate department wanted to put in place originally and that they got, you know, that you got community input from and done a whole lot of, a lot of work from. And our really dire budget situation has changed that a lot. So, can you speak to what went behind this decision and what's being considered in this item at the Rosehill site?
So, I'll start and then hand over to Jeremy, Jeremy Strifler, our Director of Real Estate here in Austin ISD. So, trustee Willey, you're exactly right. Back when we identified the old Rosehill site as a potential location for some type of project, we engaged with the community. We identified the project as one of the first ones we would take on, in fact, because it was tied to a 2017 bond improvement and not necessarily a consolidation. It was really kind of available to explore. Multiple conversations took place with community led by our real estate director here, Jeremy. And we were really trying to strike a balance between kind of density, need to provide housing for teachers, and also kind of recognize the constraints that, you know, kind of we were operating within, you know, setbacks and otherwise. And also acknowledging that, given the size of the site, it was going to be impossible for us to ever bring back a traditional public education facility, like a school. It's just really, really small. And so, that effort progressed for quite some time. We engaged with a partner initially to kind of go through an analysis to see what we could do. We shared that with the board. And then, parallel to that, we began to move forward and recognize that the budget that we have as an organization to manage was becoming more and more constrained. And several months ago, back in, I think even August or September, there was a real desire for the administration to bring to the board different ideas that allow us to monetize sites in different ways that could help shore up fund balance. And so, just to be clear, any capital injection by way of a fee simple transaction is not going to get us to where we need to be, right? We still have to get to a balanced budget, which means we need to truly address our fixed costs or increase revenue, whatever that looks like. But we did, and I did hear from the board a lot in clear, Matias, get creative. Let's figure out ways to kind of increase the opportunities so that we can, you know, have more time to do things the right way, right? So, capital injection really helps us buy time. And so, what we did, Jeremy kind of adjusted his approach and we began to engage with partners. We went through a procurement process or through, I would say, a real estate-driven process that was informed by procurement to get to a place where we had a value that really provided some relief to the constraints that we're operating in regarding our budget. And so, that's what I've asked Jeremy to do. It was really kind of at the direction of us wanting to explore opportunities to shore up our budget. It's not going to solve all the problems, certainly, but it is a resource that we have. And so, that's what has brought us here today. And so, we have a value that we think is appropriate. It does provide relief. And just given the severe constraints that we're operating within our budget, I'm wanting to bring it to the board for consideration. I don't know, Jeremy, if you want to add anything?
That was a very good summary of the whole process. The only thing I would add is that when we did market the property, we did explore ground lease options as well. You know, because we know in conversations with the community, about maintaining control was important. But just the current reality of the market is that that was not going to drive the value as much as a fee simple sale. So, thus, we feel confident, though, with the selected partner that they will be able to deliver on that value for us compared to all the other offers that were made.
And then, were there any other, I would say, you know, considerations besides like the amount offered to the district that made this proposal beneficial to the neighborhood over others?
Yes. So, in the evaluation process, we were able to interview the top four proposals. And what really stood out for OHC Partners is that they are locally based. They really had a strong approach to how to work with the community. Because what we're asking you to all to do is to approve executing a contract. But similar to buying a home, you know, when you execute that contract, you have time for due diligence and it's not one in the same. You don't get the money just when you execute a sale contract on the same day. Or at least most times, you don't have that luck. And so, they're going to be starting their due diligence upon approval from the board. And they've really laid out a clear approach to how they will engage with the community to get input on the design and the scope of the project, but also work with the city because they will have to secure city approvals in order to, again, get to the value that they have offered. And also what stood out was they really understood the neighborhood. They understood kind of history of it. They're all local-based. And so, they knew how the community uses playground even today. And so, really taking those things into consideration, it really stood out in the interview process.
And so, is, did this proposal make, show any consideration for the heritage trees on the property that, you know, in addition to being beautiful and good for our air, help with flooding mitigation? Did they?
So, they have not gone into the, into that type of storm management, stormwater management design yet. But we always emphasize similar, like we did with the Koi project, you know, what are our values? And that access to green space, sustainability, you know, utilizing historically undervalized businesses in the contracting process. You know, that was all made clear in our outreach to them, you know, developers to say, hey, this is, we want you to mimic our values. And so, you know, that will be something we'll keep a strong eye on as they work through their design to make sure, similar like we're doing over at the Koi site, you know, that preservation of heritage trees, but also maintaining access to green space for the community.
Okay. So, the plans presented showed access to green space to the, like, entire Rosehill, like to the wider community, not just to those who will be?
Yeah. They're aware of the history of the site and making sure there's that, a balance of that private and public usage.
Well, yeah. Well, thank you so much. This is where, I mean, this is, you know, in my community, we're a really tight-knit community. I know everyone who lives around here. My daughter learned to ride her bike at this site. So, I'm glad to hear they know our community well because they will be very engaged in the process. And this, yeah, this, we're in a tough spot with our decreases in federal funding, with no expectation of the state funding us where we should be, even though our community sure did show out this week. our, our community sure did show out this week and, and come out. Um, and in addition to other communities in Texas. So that was a, a really, really bright spot there. But I, you know, I think that we are still have, have a lot of uncertainty, um, wi- with our budget. And thank you for your, for answering my questions, and I'm, I'm sure I will have many more. And, um, my neighbors who are, who are absolute experts, um, in this will, will have many more as well. So thank you for being responsive when, when questions have, have come up. And I know, um, you will continue to be, and I'll, I'll be coming with more questions.
Absolutely. I don't think it was reflected in the public comments today, but I received several emails and have been exchanging emails and phone calls with multiple neighbors already. And so I know this is gonna warrant a lot of conversation, but again, that's where I go back to the confidence we have in the partner that they have made that commitment to engage with the community around the design of the project, and not just pretend that they have all the answers, um, on their own, and just go to the city without that kind of important step.
Well, and, and Jeremy, I also want to acknowledge that, you know, our approach to all of this is, is different than many public entities, I would say. You know, we intentionally, you know, emailed and engaged with folks, letting them know that it would be on the agenda today. Um, it's not something that, that had to be done, but we thought it was important that everybody understand kind of where we are, what's coming about, so that no one is surprised. Uh, so we did send an email to everybody that had engaged with us in the past. We tried to promote it to let everybody know that it was on the agenda today. So, um, I just want to make sure that was clear, and I appreciate you, Jeremy, for leading that work.
And thank you. And, and like, I, I've had the opportunity to call neighborhoods, call my neighbors, and I still have plenty, plenty more I, I want to talk to, and, and thank you, trustee Boswell, for, for calling. Um, neighbors as well, because, yeah, we, it's just, it's, it's a lot to talk about and, um, people who really care about our schools and, and care about our city. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And anything else on section 12? All right. Um, so that ends our regular agenda preview.
I have one.
Oh, sorry, trustee Kaufman, no, it does not end our regular agenda preview.
I have a whimsical point before we go to break. Um, for the historians who study this meeting long in the future, I think they would be curious to know what Matias's shirt is, since you can only see glimpses of it on the screen. Would you, would you share with us what your t-shirt is, please?
Uh, this is, uh, this is, uh, uh, 222, March 1st, budget kickoff. Uh, it was awesome. It was so much fun. It was outside. And there's a panda and a leopard together, because, uh, you may not know, but Langford Elementary School is swinging to Palm Elementary in the Palm Pandas. So, uh, it is a joint shirt. Um, I, I figured, uh, you know, the trustees wouldn't get mad at me for not wearing a suit today. Um, and my, it got all regal anyway. Um, but yeah, that's what this is, and, and, um, it's a, it was an incredible event, uh, and a great celebration, and a great way to, to start the spring break.
I love that question. Thank you. Um, now we will end our regular agenda preview and recess the open meeting at 8:34 PM. We'll move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. And when we're finished with the executive session, we'll briefly return to the open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and included in all replays of tonight's meeting. Thank you for joining us, and have a good evening.
Happy spring break.
Yes, and happy spring break. Okay, we will now reconvene the open meeting, 11:52 PM. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
The meeting is adjourned at 11:52 PM. Thank you.